Okay. Just a few words to say thank you for coming out. This is the third of our public hearings, last one. And it's been great to see the number of people come out, support their causes. We've been blessed in this county to have been able to get this grant so that the monies that the county doesn't have right now for the types of things that the grant will give us can be spent and support the various interests that everybody has. As was said this morning, at a meeting we had this morning, $850,000 is a lot of money, but when we start listening to everyone and all the causes and all the needs, we're far, far short from having all the money we need. I want to just couple of things, and one is the draft, and I want to emphasize the word "draft," of the document that was sent out and been published and put out for everybody to read. Please understand it's just that, it was a draft, it was meant to get the ball started. We had to have a document for everyone to review. Projects were proposed in that draft, just to get started. I know some of the groups that are here tonight are here for the reasons that may or may not be in it, or amount of money that's in there is not enough, or whatever. But again, everyone is being listened to, the purpose of the public hearing is to do that. The commissioners will be the ones that then will have to take all this information once it's distilled, if you would, and presented in another report for everyone to read. So, this is your hearing, I'm going to shut up and leave it at that, and turn it over to Michael Harris, and he'll take you through the rest of the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you Fred, thank you everyone again for coming here. As I mentioned, this is our third public hearing that we're having. For those of you, I see a lot of familiar faces that were here at the first public hearing. The format's going to be fairly similar. Our consultants, Mr. Lee Mueller and Mr. Bill Waszulinski will be coming up and doing a brief PowerPoint presentation, kind of going a little bit of background on how we got to the point we're at right now, and what some of the next steps are going forward. Again, my name is Michael Harris, I'm the Planning and Zoning Division Director here at Henry County, joined by Ms. Sherry Hobson Matthews, our Planning and Zoning Director, and Ms. Julie Hoover Ernst, our Communications Director, from the county staff, as well as county manager. They're going to kind of, again, go through a brief PowerPoint, want to let everyone to know that we are being televised tonight, and one thing, we want to make sure we had as much outreach as possible. So, the, tonight's meeting is being televised, so we'll ask, when we get to the portion with public comment, it's not necessarily a dialogue tonight, but it's just for us to receive comments. Hopefully by now, everyone's had an opportunity to review the draft document. It went out for review beginning on May 16th, and will run for public review through June 14th. So, if, hopefully, again, hopefully you've had an opportunity to review the document. If you haven't, we've got some information, we're going to touch on some of the key points of the document this evening. So, you know, our purpose here this evening is really to solicit more and additional comments, and just kind of hear from the community as far as, you know, where we think that the needs, where the needs are. With that, I'd like to do Mr. Bill Waszulinski, Mr. Lee Mueller.
Thank you, Michael. I just wanted to go over what the purpose of tonight's public hearing is, and what we're doing here tonight, and just to kind of recap where we've been. As Michael said, this is our third public hearing. We were here back in March, and we conducted a week-long of hearings, as well as stakeholder interviews, to kind of ascertain what the needs are within the community. So, tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to report on the results of the needs assessment that we conducted. Again, we're going to talk about priority housing and community development needs. Again, these were developed by input that we received during stakeholder interviews, as well as public hearings and comments, and surveys, we've received a lot of survey information as well. We also want to go over the objectives for addressing these needs, which we're required to do. And then we also want to kind of review the resources, Michael alluded to, the fact that the county's getting $850,000 in community development block grant funds, and we just want to kind of go over that. We're also going to do kind of a review of the report on funding requests that we received to date, just to give you a really good sense in terms of what Fred alluded to, in terms of the amount of requests that came in versus the amount of funding that we have available. Then we want to review, again, we want to stress, it's a review of the proposed activities, nothing is final until it's adopted by the county commissioners. This is based, again, on the priority needs that we've heard throughout the county and throughout our time here, as well as surveys and stakeholder interviews that we received. So, it's not just based on just our assessment, it's things that we've heard in the county over and over again, as what we're calling priority needs. The next thing that we want to do is, again, go through the review, you know, listen to comments in terms of what you have in terms of the needs on the proposed activities. Before we get into that, I just want to kind of review quickly, again, if many of you were here this morning, you heard this, or if you were at other public hearings, you heard it. We are currently conducting, or preparing what we call a five-year consolidated plan. This is a requirement under the CDBG block grant program. The county is now an entitlement community, and will receive CDBG funds every year moving forward. This five-year plan covers the period of July 1st, 2012, through 6/30/2017, so the priority needs are projected out over the five-year process, or five-year period, in which we need to address. I covered a little bit of this just a second ago, but we, the process that we've been going through resulted in stakeholder consultations, we met with local government officials, public and private agencies, we met with the housing authorities, we met with special needs providers, we met with public hearing folks such yourselves coming to tell what their process, or what their needs are that they have in the neighborhood. So, again, it wasn't done in a vacuum, we kind of have these, these were prepared based on specific identified needs. The other part of these, of this document is, it includes the Housing and Homeless Needs Assessment, it also includes the Housing Market Analysis, both of those are basically demographic statistics that are included in part, in the document. It also includes a strategic plan, and the strategic plan is basically the local priorities that we've identified through this outreach process. The final part of the document is an annual action plan, and what that is, is basically laying out to everybody, HUD included, our proposed activities for fiscal year 2012. Again, emphasizing that this is proposed based on what we've heard so far. It's subject to change, it's subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. Again, we also, as I said, had public, citizen participation in the form of public hearings, and again, this is part of, this is the third public hearing that we're conducting here. Just as a refresher in terms of the Community Development Block Grant Program, each selected activity must meet one of these, what they call three national objectives, in order to be funded and approved by HUD. The three national objectives under the CDBG regulations include benefit to low to moderate income persons, so at least 70% of the grant must benefit low to moderate income persons in some way, shape, or form. Second is prevent or eliminate blight, and not more than 30% of your grant can go towards that. And then the third is a less used one, but still eligible, and that is meeting an urgent need. That's generally if a storm blows through and creates havoc, and you need to address very urgent needs within the community due to a natural disaster of that sort, so it's used very, very infrequently. So, at this point, I want to turn it over to my colleague Lee Mueller, who is actually going to go through the CDBG funding request that we've received to date in the next part of the presentation.
Thank you very much, Bill. Good evening. While demand always greatly exceeds the amount of money available, and this is no exception here in Henry County, you have $850,000 available for this first year. The request you got exceeded $4.6 million, close to $6 requested for every $1 available, so, in that sense, you're like everybody else in the country. I want to do reference the handouts you got. Did everybody get a handout when you came in, or did you get one since coming in? You need one, sir? Who else needs one? Could you just? Yeah, I'll be referring to these for the next several minutes. You want to have one of these because if you're still looking for a gift for Father's Day for that hard-to-shop-for dad, you give him one of these, I guarantee you, he'll be surprised when he gets it. Okay, I'm going to begin on the page that, is your top page, the one that has Mullin and Lonergan Associates up at the top, is that the first page of your handout? Is that the way it's stapled together? Okay, good. Now, these are a list of the needs that were identified during the meetings that Bill just referred to back in March. There were focus group meetings, there were stakeholder interviews, some agencies submitted surveys, we had meetings, or other consultation with the staff here in the county, and with agencies, regional agencies, of that sort. So, these are the needs that were identified, they are in no particular order. Also, if 10 people expressed a need, it got listed once here, if somebody just, you know, two people expressed a need, it got listed once here. So, you can't go by this as thinking, this is the order of priority in that sense, okay? But, just to review, housing needs, always a need for affordable housing. Special needs housing, again, these are things like special needs groups being the homeless, the elderly, people with disabilities, no difference here. Additional emergency shelters needed, there's a need for transitional housing for people to leave the shelters, there's a people, there's a need for permanent supportive housing for people exiting transitional housing. There's a need for accessible housing for people not only with physical disabilities, but also with mental disabilities. And elderly rental units were cited as a need. So, pretty typical needs there. Another big need is rehabilitation of owner-occupied housing, that was cited, we were told that was needed throughout the county, not just in certain areas. Emergency housing rehabilitation, roofs, windows, floors, that sort of thing, weatherization. Infill housing was specifically cited as being needed in the city of McDonough, it may be needed in other places also. And then rent and mortgage assistance was also identified as a housing need. Now, in the public service needs, Senior Center in Hampton, that was mentioned frequently, as was the early head start program, we heard many people advocate for those, youth recreation programs, after-school programs, all of those things were mentioned. The food pantry expansion, senior services, literacy program, we got many requests, or many people spoke for those, as did the Boys and Girls Club, that was another need that many people cited and supported. And also expansion of the free medical clinic. Now, in terms of demolition and blight removal, there are a number of vacant and blighted structures throughout the county. Locust Grove happened to specifically identify some needs they had, but again, these kind of needs are, they're, these structures are scattered throughout the county, so there's a need there. Terms of economic development, a lot of people noted, and this is always the case, you know, you need jobs, so there's some sort of job training needed, workforce development of some kind, whether that training is, a couple of people mentioned specific kinds of training, electronics, computer training, vocational training, all those sort of workforce development programs were named, as were, as was the need for infrastructure for new and expanding businesses. Handicapped accessibility improvements, Locust Grove in particular mentioned that they need an elevator for the municipal building, so that people can get to both the main building and also the lower building where the courts are. And there was a need cited for curb cuts, parking spaces, and other public places, like I think they mentioned libraries and parks, all of these places need to have accessibility improvements. Transportation was another item that came in. You know, many people said, if you don't have a car, you're out of luck here, that there is no fixed road service, especially if you're trying to get to a job, if you're not, you know, if you're working any sort of unusual shift and you don't have a car, you're just not going to be working very long, you know? So, that was cited as a need. Some people cited specific needs that are listed here, early morning shutter from McDonough to Stockbridge. McDonough also mentioned they need a better street and pedestrian circulation system, transportation to food pantry. So, there were a number of transportation-related needs cited. And then, in terms of public facilities improvements, there was a need cited for sidewalks, curbs, and streets, infrastructure sewers, that sort of thing. So, a lot of those things are needed in many areas of the county. Now, the next handout I want to review is the one that's marked up in the upper left-hand corner, priority, needs and strategies. Is that the next one in order in your, up in the upper left-hand corner, it'll say priority needs and strategies. So, that's the one I want to review next. Now, consolidated plan covers five years. There's two handouts left. One will say priority needs and strategies up in the upper left-hand corner, the other one will have like a seven in a gray box, I'll get to that one next. But the one we're doing right now is priority needs and strategies, page numbers are at the bottom, right-hand corner, page number six. The five-year plan is just that, it covers a five-year period, and for, and this is an excerpt from the Consolidated Plan Executive Summary. It talks about the goals and objectives for the next five years. And if you look at the very bottom of page six, it talks about a goal to increase the supply of affordable and accessible housing for low and moderate income households. And then if you look, turn the page and go to the top of page seven, objective A, the county intends to allot 15% to 30% of its annual allocation for each of the next five years for residential rehab. So, that's the county's goal on that particular instance. And underneath that, you'll see a goal two, promote physically accessible housing for those with disabilities through partnerships with nonprofits and other appropriate agencies. And the objective there is, over the next five years, work with partners to produce five to 10 housing units that will be accessible or adaptable for persons with disabilities. Now, in some cases, the county's support will be directly financial, in other cases, it will be merely supporting organizations that are going after money for these sorts of things, so the county will issue letters of support. If you go down toward the bottom of that page, there's a goal one listed, and this involves improving the quality of life for homeless individuals and families, and the objective there is, objective A, for each year, over the next five years, the county will provide public services, public services funding for at least one agency that serves the homeless population. And then underneath that, talks about continuing to participate in the Georgia Balance of State Continuum of Care, and support efforts to reduce homelessness in the county, and that is exactly what the continuum of care is, it deals with homelessness, moving people from homelessness to transitional housing to permanent supportive housing to independent living. And finally, if you go to page eight, under community development, the top goal, goal number one's improve the quality of life for low and moderate income, low and moderate income neighborhoods through infrastructure and public facilities improvements, and spot demolition. And here, we're talking about for each year over the next five years, the county will fund one to two public, I'm sorry, one to two, infrastructure or public facilities projects along that sort of line. So, we're talking streets, curbs, sewers, that sort of thing. And then, objective B under that is county will demolish two to 10 vacant buildings over the next five years. Goal two, or, I'm sorry, yeah, goal two is improving economic opportunities, and you see, objective A is that county's going to foster, maintain partnerships with the goal that they'll have programs or opportunities that'll benefit at least five to 10 people annually, and there's encourage a link between that job training and actual county employers. And then goal three is support public services, and there was a lot of demand for, a lot of requests for public services. Goal three is to support public services that address the community development needs of low and moderate income residents, and you see, objective A there is, the county intends to provide CDBG funding for two to three public services annually to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents and special needs populations. So, that's, that's the statement of five-year goals. And then if you go to the remaining pages of your handout, in the lower right-hand corner, it'll say pages nine and 10, and this is an excerpt from the annual plan that's in the document. Okay, so this is, these are the proposals for this first year of funding, fiscal year 2012, which starts July 1st, 2012, and ends June 30th, 2013. Okay, under housing, we're talking about Henry, under the first goal, objective A, Henry County will allot $210,000 of its annual CDBG allocation for the rehabilitation of approximately 26 residential units. And under, in the middle of the page, under homeless needs, objective A, the county will allocate $45,000 of CDBG funds to two agencies that provide supportive services that address the needs of the homeless population. And going further down, under community development needs, under goal one, there are two objectives, one, the county will provide $342,500 of CDBG funds to provide improvements at four public facilities, and objective B is the county will use $30,000 of CDBG funds to demolish two vacant buildings to prevent blighting influences. And then finally, on the last page, page 10, up near the top, under goal three, objective A, the county will provide $82,500 of CDBG funding to four organizations that provide public services to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents and special populations. Now, on the bottom half of that page, you should see a chart that talks about the proposed funding, listing the activities that are proposed for this year, and I'm going to go over those in just a little more detail right now. Okay, under housing activities, which are the first two listed on your chart, but there's a little, little more information here. The Henry County Four Center for Housing, $75,000, and that's for rehabilitation. The Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanities, $135,000, that's for a combination of rehabilitation and demolition. So, we're talking there, for these two activities, a total of $210,000, and that is 25% of the total grant you have, that total $850,000, that's 25% of it allocated for these two communities, activities, I'm sorry. Public facilities, Senior Center West, $250,000. Locust Grove Municipal Building, purchase and installation of the elevator that I mentioned a minute ago, $60,000. Helping in His Name, which is a food pantry, purchase an installation of a freezer there for $12,500. Communities and schools, to renovate a facility for early head start program, $20,000. So, the total there for these activities is $342,500, and that is 40% of the total grant. It's 40% of that $850,000 is for these public facilities. Now, administration. Administration is a maximum, can be 20% of your total grant, and 20% of your total grant is $170,000, and that's what is being proposed. Now, that's a lot of money, but there are a lot of expenses, especially with the startup of this program. This is your first year in, there's going to be a lot of work to do establishing these programs. You also are going to have to prepare some documents that are required by HUD. When you get this federal money, there are always strings attached, as we all know. You'll have to prepare annual reports, and you're also going to have to prepare what's called an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So, all the money for these sorts of things need to come out of this administration money. So, you have general program administration, you have technical assistance, you have plans and studies, those sorts of things all have to come out of this line item. And that, again, that's 20% of the grant. And then finally, public services. Communities and schools for early head start, and early head start and head start, $32,500. Now, these are public services, these aren't for buildings, these are like for operating support, okay? The First Foundation, to purchase and distribute books to preschool children, $10,000. Haven House, which is the Domestic Violence Center, operating support, $20,000. Connecting Henry, operating support of $20,000. Hands of Hope Clinic, the Free Medical Clinic, operating support there, $25,000. And a Friends House, which works with children in crisis, operating support there, $20,000. So, you're talking about a total of $127,500 for public services, and that would be 15% of the total grant. And here, I must also point out, this is the maximum percentage of your grant that you can allot to public services in any one year. 15% is the maximum, and what's being proposed is that maximum of $127,000. Okay, just a brief word about the schedule. We've had meetings in, in March, there are, and we've had additional consultation in April, last month, and in April, we, the county officials selected this preliminary list of projects to put on public display. The document's been on public display starting on May 16th, it'll, that public display period ends next Thursday, June 14th, it's out for display and comment. It is anticipated that the Board of County Commissioners will take action on this consolidated plan and annual action plan on June 18th. Then after that is done, this has, the consolidated plan and the annual action plan have to be submitted to HUD on, no later than June 29th. And then your program year here in the county starts July 1st. Now, normally, what happens is your, your applications are due 45 days before your program year starts. Ordinarily, that would have meant you would have had to have your applications in by May 15th. HUD has made a number of changes this year that have caused a lot of grantees across the whole country to request extensions. Henry County is one of those, especially since this is your first year. So, you got an extension to June 29th. HUD has 45 days from when they get your application, they have 45 days to review it and act on it. So, you're looking at the middle of August before you'll get word from HUD to say yea or nay regarding your application. And finally, with that, we're ready to accept comments, and I'm going to ask Michael to speak about that a little bit. Thank you.
And what we're going to do, similar to the way we structured it last time, we're going to transition up to the top, just so you're kind of facing us, so the camera can see, can see you as you're speaking. And again, we're just here to receive your comments and make sure that your comments are taken into account. All the comments received at all the public hearings, the first one, the second one from this morning, as well as this one, will be incorporated into the final draft document as well, that'll be eventually submitted. So, again, our purpose tonight is to receive those comments from, from the community, whatever, whether it's on the draft plan itself, or just general comments, we're here to take your comments and make sure they get noted and included in the, in the final draft document. We're here to make sure that everyone has a voice, if you have something to say, you know, for the sake of time, which has kind of limit your comments, you know, so everyone has an opportunity to make sure you speak, it doesn't run too, too long, but, you know, anyone who wants to make comments, we're here for, as long as we need to be here to make sure everyone that wants to make a comment can make a comment. So, with that, if you want to start coming up, I would ask, that you please speak into the microphone, because that's noted, we are being televised, we want to make sure we capture every, all your comments completely. So, those who would like to, please come on up and offer your comments.
Good evening. I'm reading here currently. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Griffin. We, I want to speak briefly on four things, who we are, what we do, why we do what we do, and then finally, how we plan to invest the CDBG dollars that are proposed for our program. In your packet, you have there in front of you, a newsletter that we sent to some of our strongest donors, and then a list of community action team members. These are some of the folks who are on our community action team. These ladies happen to be retired or current active educators. They're all members of the Henry Heritage Reading Association, and that group has been a strong supporter of the First Foundation. We are part of the First Foundation for Childhood Literacy. That is the third document in your packet. The First Foundation for Childhood Literacy sends books to children in over 100 municipalities and counties in the state of Georgia. Henry County became an active participant in the program in 2006. That is what we do. We send free books to preschool children to prepare those children for success in school. The next document is a brief history of the books we sent last year. You'll see in that tabulation that as of the end of December, we had sent 73,000 books, over 73,000 books, to children in our county in our five-year history. Currently, we're sending books to about 850 to 900 students each month. That is basically the amount of funding that we've been able to secure. The funding that we receive from our program is all homegrown, we raise every dollar. Most of it's through activities, but we do receive some grants from local foundations and area businesses. What I gave you is a sample of one of the books that we give. The books are vetted by a group of educators and psychologists, and they're chosen for their appropriateness for the various age levels. So that a young child's going to receive a book that has lots, lots of pictures and few words, and then an older child, a four-year-old or five-year-old, will receive books that have longer sentences, more advanced words. The magic is in the books. A program participant gets one book per month
A program participant gets one book per month in the mail, and with each book comes a wrapper that is a newsletter to the parent that gives reading suggestions, helpful hints, and other pertinent information for utilizing this book as a resource in their home. Why do we do what we do? Why do we send all these books? Please look on the next page, which has a summary of the program overview, and here's the issue. We know that approximately sixty-one percent of low-income families do not have a single piece of reading material suitable for a child. In Georgia, a third of our children come to school unprepared to learn, and seventy-five percent of students who are poor readers in the third grade will remain poor readers in high school. Further, Georgia scored forty-six on SATs in two thousand and six. One in four adults in Georgia operate at a low literacy level, and low-literate workers cost Georgia businesses seven billion dollars a year. These facts caught the attention of our local business leaders. This is a summary of the Economics and Education Workforce Development Program. The first page is the title page. The second page outlines the four goals that our business community leaders and our education leaders, these are the recommendations that they came up with for a workforce development program. Our literacy program impacts two of those goals. Improve academic rank among Georgia school systems by making literacy and reading proficiency a priority focus of schools, homes, and the community. And then number two, and I think this is our greatest impact, is improving school readiness, and under strategy number two, expand community access to school readiness resources and We'll continue to serve our regular nine-hundred children a year. If we are a recipient of the ten-thousand-dollar grant from the CDBG funds, our goal is to outreach to an additional three-hundred-and-fifty children, and this is the last document in your packet. This is a proposal that we've put together with Henry County Schools and are discussing with school administrators currently. This program will target children in five area Title I schools. The children will be nominated by teachers in the schools, because we feel like these teachers are going to have a very good handle on identifying children in their classroom who have literacy needs and book deficits in their homes. The parents will be identified, they'll be asked to join the program, nominated to participate in the program, and if the parent agrees, then the children in that home will receive free books for the entire five-year period. Your ten-thousand dollars, the ten-thousand dollars that, that we hope to invest in this program, will allow us to serve three-hundred-and-fifty children. The math is simple, it's twenty-eight dollars per child per year. That is what we do, this is why we want to do it. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you. Excellent presentation. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Sheila Maxwell, and I'm a representative for the Boys and Girls Club of Henry County. I'm also a mother of three, one child in the military, one child in college, and one child in the second grade. I'm also the PTO Vice President for Red Oak Elementary School, so I am also here on behalf of Henry County Schools, and I'm representing the PTO persons from those schools. I'm also here to speak to you in regards to the Boys and Girls Club and the impact that it would have on the at-risk youth in Henry County. Currently, there are no programs in the county to assist at-risk students. As a PTO representative, I have been contacted by several parents within the community, at my school and outside of the school, asking for resources in the county that would help them with their children. Fortunately, as of today, there are no programs to help these parents who are in need. Having myself having had had a troubled child, when my child was in trouble, I, and I've been in Henry County for thirteen years, there has never been a facility to help those children between the ages of twelve and twenty-four. So I'm asking that we consider the Boys and Girls Club for funding, because the clubs are community-based and building-centered, the clubs are safe, they're affordable, the membership does not run the club, membership sometimes is twenty dollars for an entire year, so it is very affordable, and it is a year-round program. It does not function just when school functions, so therefore, it is in place and functioning during this time, like it's summertime, because a lot of parents cannot afford the camp fees as they currently are in the county. Also, the clubs are led by paid, trained professionals, and again, they are safe, and there are opportunities for young people to build new skills and raise their belief that they can succeed. It is an outlet for young people to have someone to speak to when they don't have time to talk to school personnel because of the instructional hours that are built into a school day. It's an opportunity for them to sit down and share their feelings openly. Also, the club collaborates with local partners to mobilize resources, recruit hard-to-reach youth, mainstream them into appropriate club programming, and monitor their progress through the individualized case management, so there are no children that fall between the cracks. Every child is served individually. Also, the program will be offered for recreational, with supervised basketball, football, so forth. Also, the Boys and Girls Club Steering Committee of Henry County, which I have several members with me that represent all avenues of the community, from community subdivision presidents and so forth, are present tonight, to actually see whether or not we will receive funding. And I also wanted to clarify, to make it clear, that we are not asking for funding for operational purposes, that is not the purpose. We are asking for funding to renovate a building, and at this time, we have a representative that is at the City of Stockbridge meeting, which the City of Stockbridge is proposing to give us a facility for a dollar a year. And I think if the city can invest a building at a dollar a year, that there should be some means in which that we should be able to receive some funding to help renovate a building that is being given for almost nothing to help the youth in this community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Armani Johnson, and my address is 115 Shepherd Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia 30281. I am a teenager in Henry County, and I'm a part of Art Reach, and it has really changed me in many ways, and I feel that if we have a Boys and Girls Club, it will reach a lot of kids, because Art Reach is not for a bunch of kids, and I believe that we need funding to help the teenagers and stuff stay out the street and stop using drugs. I believe that it will help them in many ways, academically, and express and cope, and help them do things instead of like going on the streets and everything. I believe that that a Boys and Girls Club at the school will really help them. As a teenager, going into Art Reach, I thought it was going to be boring and lame as a young old teenager, but it really helps you, like, instead of being on the streets, I would rather go to Art Reach. You're fed, you're welcome, taken care of, and you're protected, and I believe in the Boys and Girls Club that with a lot of adults around, that it will help you also, it will be more, it will be a lot of protection, I will feel safe, and I believe the other teenagers will feel safe in, in this Boys and Girls Club.
Ms. Johnson, I have a quick question for you, and perhaps your Dr. Maxwell can answer. Is Art Reach, is that a function of the Boys and Girls Club? I heard it mentioned earlier today as well.
Art Reach 180 is a program that my organization, a nonprofit called Crosswalk Ministries USA, developed. However, the students that have spoken on behalf of Art Reach 180 today, and the parent as well, have spoken with the assumption that, and the true assumption, that there are similar programs in the Boys and Girls Club that the Boys and Girls Club offers. And so the point that they're making is that there's a parallel between having something positive and productive to do after school, which is what the Boys and Girls Club would offer.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
My name is Ruth Rucker, and I'm the Executive Director for Hands of Hope Clinic. Most of, hopefully everyone knows, Hands of Hope Clinic is the only clinic in, type clinic like this in Henry County that's serving the uninsured, lower-income residents of our community. It's a, it's a true community endeavor. We've got four paid staff and over eighty active volunteers, doctors, nurses, and dentists, and many others, who come and serve the individuals in need in our community. So we are, we raise our money right here in this community, we do have access to some limited private foundation monies, but it's pretty much a year-to-year endeavor. We, we need ongoing funding. It's tough, the demands on us for, from individuals needing care are great, and in order to be able to even begin to think about expanding services, we need some base of dependable funding. So, so this, the funds from this grant are very important to us, to this, to Hands of Hope Clinic. I, I want to also mention, since I was here last time, we did do a study, an interesting study, that was able to show that because Hands of Hope exists and is able to provide a medical home for folks in our community who otherwise would not have anywhere to turn for their medical care, that we have estimated that we were able to save over six-hundred unnecessary emergency room visits as a result. That's estimated to be about a quarter of a billion-dollar savings, really, to the community, to the hospital, to everyone who's affected, and frees up space, of course, in our very busy, crowded emergency room for, for true emergencies. I did, we invited patients from the, from the clinic to come here and give their story tonight. There are many who really couldn't speak, you know, wouldn't feel comfortable even speaking in this setting, but I did have two join us, so I just thought I'd give them a minute to just give their strong testimony to the importance of, of this community endeavor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Scanlon. I've been a patient of Hands of Hope Clinic for about six years. I was diagnosed with Graves' disease in two thousand and two. I had quit a full-time job. I was so sick that I couldn't even get up off the floor without my son pulling me up off the floor. I have had two major illnesses. I was also diagnosed with cancer this year, which I found out I've had cancer the whole time I've had the Graves. About two thousand and four, I needed to have a needle biopsy done, but because I lost my job, I could not have the needle biopsy done. Through Hands of Hope, they did the needle biopsy, and they found out that I had cancer of the thyroid. It was all over my thyroid. And to me, Hands of Hope has meant hope. I didn't have any hope, and they brought me back my, they've given me back my life. And it's a worthy organization. My husband is also a patient there, he's a dental patient and a heart patient, and it is just, I can't say enough, it has brought so many, so many people hope. There's been so many people that I've met that were actually dying, and Hands of Hope has brought them life. So that's what I want to say, and I want to thank you for letting me speak.
My name is Doug Drucker. I've been a pastor in this city for eighteen years, and I was one of the first victims of this great recession, two thousand and eight. It come and swept my church away, all my people, all my members were construction, blue-collar workers, and they were the first ones to go in Henry County, and people ain't working, they can't tie it, so no money coming in, so we lost the church. And my income went with it also. And at, at, at that time, my insurance for my wife and I was fourteen-hundred dollars a month. Well, we lost it, and then the next year, the Hands of Hope Clinic, we found out at the Hands of Hope Clinic, my wife went to it, and they discovered cancer in her nose, a rare cancer in her, in her side of her face. It took them eighteen months, but the Hands of Hope worked diligently and basically saved my wife's life. She'd be, she wouldn't be here today. They got her free care over at Emory, and I personally receive all of my care there. It's a wonderful, wonderful organization for people like myself that's been gainfully employed. I'm sixty years old, but all of a sudden, the economy went down, it took me with it, and thank God for the Hands of Hope, because I can get medical care, my wife can get medical care, and there's hundreds and thousands of other people they minister to on a daily basis. God bless y'all for having me. Thank you.
Please don't be bashful. Yeah, if you want to come up and speak, just come on up.
My name is Walter Gordon, and I'm here because we have people with disabilities, disabilities that need your help. Imagine yourself faith-based but unable to attend church because you lack accessible transportation. Or imagine the need for your basic groceries but unable to shop because you are public transit-dependent in a community without transportation. Or imagine just rejecting a job offer because you have no reliable transportation. Well, Disability Link is the way I work, and we offer options to those, to these everyday challenges confronting people with disabilities. We are 501(c)(3) nonprofit grassroots organization with goals, decisions, and control of services led by and for people with disabilities. Disability Link serves twelve counties in metropolitan Atlanta, and one of them is Henry County. And what we do is we provide advocacy, peer support, information and referrals, independent living skills, training, nurse home transition, employment, and transportation. Disability Link has a voucher program through the Atlanta Region Commission, but the funds from this grant are limited, and we already have over a hundred and fifty consumers who are on the waiting list, twelve that are in Henry County, that are in dire need of transportation service, especially in rural areas or the rural communities. service, especially in rural areas or the rural communities. The goal of the voucher transportation assistance program is to improve, increase transportation options for people with disabilities. Uh, the voucher program provides resources directly to our consumers who then buy their own transportation service. They are in charge of their own destiny and where they want to go. Um, the Federal Transit Administration, Region Four, is an agency within the Department of Transportation that administers funds through an initiative called the New Freedom Grant. This grant provides the budget to operate our voucher trans, travel system program. Uh, but as I said, we got a hundred-and-fifty people, and, uh, it's really, really hard for us to, uh, meet the needs of these people if we don't have any additional funds. The cost of transportation can be very high, everybody knows. For example, a consumer who goes to dialysis center for treatment, he can spend, or she can spend, uh, anywhere from one-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, depending on the distance and the modes of transportation. And since most of Disability Link's participants on a fixed income, this can be an undue burden and hardship. Henry County citizens make up more than one-fifth of Disability, Disability Link's, uh, program, VTAP service recipients, who are primarily citizens from McDonough and Stockbridge seeking dialysis. A grant from Henry County will help Disability Link better serve all of Henry County's citizens toward independence and inclusion. Our success is documented by serving over one-hundred consumers, I'm sorry, one-thousand consumers in metropolitan Atlanta since 2006. Again, please help us better serve our growing disability communities in Henry County by considering funding Disability Link. Please. Thank you.
Excuse me, is it, is it based in, in Henry County, the organization?
No, our organization, we are in DeKalb County.
Okay.
But we serve twelve, we serve twelve counties, and Henry County is one of those counties. But we need your help.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Ken Mitchell, and, um, I had the opportunity to, uh, talk with, uh, Mr. Gordon about, uh, transportation situation here in, in, um, Henry County. And Doug, we're based in, uh, Decatur. As Walter said, we serve the twelve counties, and I'm ashamed to say that, um, Henry County, we haven't done as good of a job as I'd like to say we could. Uh, we, uh, here in Henry County, if you try to do our outreach program, uh, we, um, we've been, um, extending out to more of the rural areas. Transportation, uh, is one of our biggest concerns. You know, we always say that if you are lucky enough to live long enough, you will become a person with a disability. We also understand that the lack of accessible transportation is the number-one reason that people with disabilities stay at home. If it wasn't for some kind of a transportation, for instance, coming here today, um, I would not be able to do that. I would not be able to use your stores, work, go to, uh, to your, uh, services or whatever, without the lack of accessible transportation. And what Walter has asked us to do, and has challenged Disability Link to do, is to reach out more to Henry County. And if you give us the grant or not, we're still going to honor that goal because Henry County is one of the, uh, areas that we serve, and we will continue to do that. But we can do a much better job with your guidance and help, uh, with this grant. And I thank you for your time and efforts.
And Mike, as you know, I, I live in Henry County.
Yeah.
I live in Stockbridge, and Bruce knows that I've been.
Yeah, 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 I know we talked before, I just wasn't sure exactly where it was, but you said about a third of your people you serve is within Henry County?
Mm-hmm.
As it stands right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything you guys can do, we appreciate it, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make any comments? Could you come on forward?